Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Commission Meeting for the City of Muskegon, April 28, 2015. Before we begin, I am going to ask Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga to lead us in prayer, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner?
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Creator God, we thank you for this beautiful spring day where you're enjoying. We thank you for the seasons, but we're especially grateful that as we head into the season of new birth and green, that we can embrace it. And it reminds us of the growth that we could experience and the building we could do in our community. We pray that we'll embrace it and that this will be a summer where the community comes together. We thank you that we can come together today to consider items of importance and celebration for our community. We pray that as we consider them and we work to make our community better, that we will remember your example of love and that we will hold that up for our citizens and for each other. I'll just pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. May we have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Gohren?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Is that everybody?
All present.
Groovy. Hey, before we get into potatoes, we're gonna have dessert, some celebration. Is there Mr. Davis in the house? Talk about spring growth. My goodness, my goodness. Well, welcome, welcome, welcome. We're here to honor this gentleman tonight and the hard work that he has put forth as an individual and as a teammate. And wow, what a great year, what a great season, and what a great sense of pride you brought to yourself, your team, your family, and all of us, your family at Muskegon. So the city of Muskegon, state of Michigan, would like to present you with this certificate of recognition, whereas it gives me a great deal of pleasure to express to Deontay Davis our sincere admiration and congratulations for earning the Hal Schramm Mr. Basketball Trophy, McDonald's All-American, Michigan Gatorade Player of the Year, Michigan AP Player of the Year, and Michigan First Team All-State. And whereas Deontay Davis is the 35th recipient of the Hal Schramm Mr. Basketball Trophy, an award given annually to the state's top senior by the Basketball Coaches Association of Michigan, he is also Muskegon's first player to earn the title of McDonald's All-American, Jordan Brand Classic All-American, and Michigan Gatorade Player of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Gohren, speaking on behalf of the entire City Commission and the entire community, demonize an honor and a pleasure to present this certificate of recognition to Deontay Davis in recognition of his outstanding achievements and commend him for his display of sportsmanship and leadership. Congratulations, sir, and best of luck in all your endeavors coming and going into the future. You can have these to hang in your locker. Pretty nice things, huh? You're gonna miss them, Coach?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I already do.
Sorry, I can't help you. Hey, congratulations, and best of luck.
Good luck in Michigan State.
Welcome to Spartan Nation.
The Vice Mayor doesn't have any opinions on the best schools.
Go Green.
Go Bronco.
I'm Mr. Lowly Chip. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve the minutes of the April 13, 2015 Commission Work Session Meeting and the April 14, 2015 City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Special event request: Catamaran Racing Association of Michigan requests to allow overnight camping at Pier Marquette Park in conjunction with their annual catamaran sailing regatta. Community and economic development. Summary request: Cram is holding their annual catamaran sailing regatta at Pier Marquette Park the weekend of August 14 through 16, 2015. They are again requesting permission for their participants to camp overnight at the park, as they have done in previous years. They would like to use the city-owned parking lot across from the Deck Restaurant for overnight camping, provided that the Deck's owners, Harris Hospitality, approve. If they are unable to use that lot, they request to use the city-owned parking lot at Harbor Town Beach. Staff recommendation: To approve overnight camping at Pier Marquette Park for this event on August 14, 15, and 16, 2015, with an alternate location of Harbor Town Beach Parking Lot. Amendment to the zoning ordinance. Planning and economic development. Summary request: Staff-initiated request to amend Section 2313 Community Gardens of the zoning ordinance and replace it with an urban farming ordinance. Staff recommendation: To approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation: The Planning Commission recommended approval by a six-to-one vote at the regular meeting in April. Consideration of bids for H-1697 Getty Street, Evanston to Apple Avenue Engineering. Summary of request: Award the H-1697 Getty Street, Evanston to Apple Avenue project to McCormick Sand Incorporated out of Twin Lake, Michigan. McCormick Sand submitted the lowest responsible bid of $808,844.50. Staff recommendation: Award the contract to McCormick Sand Incorporated. Cemetery Management System, GIS, Department of Public Works. Summary of request: Authorize staff to contract with Johnson and Anderson Engineering Services to design a cemetery management system for Restlon Cemetery. The system would be used for accessing records, plot, and grave space locations. City staff and the general public would be able to access information through an integrated web portal. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to hire Johnson and Anderson for professional engineering services. Agreement for grant management services for United States Environmental Protection Agency, US EPA, Shoreline Cities Green Infrastructure Grant Project, Planning and Economic Development Department. Summary of request: The city of Muskegon has received a US EPA Shoreline Cities Green Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $110,499. The West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission will administer the grant in conjunction with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, SAW-NPS Stormwater Planning Grant, which they received. The total project amount for both grants is $221,897. The projects include installation of green infrastructure in a 6.5 acre area in the Biedler Street vicinity that currently contributes untreated storm water to an underground pipe that discharges to Muskegon Lake, an abatement of Lake Michigan. Staff recommendation: To approve the agreement for grant management services between the city of Muskegon and Whymser Dick and authorize the mayor and clerk signatures. Turnkey Network Solutions Metro Act Permit, Engineering. Summary of request: Approve the request for a permit from Turnkey Network Solutions and authorize the mayor to sign the permit. Staff recommendation: Approve the permit and sign the documents. Muskegon Fire Department Equipment Request for five APX 6,000 portable radios, Department of Public Safety. Summary of request: The Director of Public Safety requests that the Commission authorize the amount of $13,500 for five APX 6,000 VHF MHZ Model 1.5 portable radios, which include accessories, batteries, chargers, and rugged packages, and high-vis color. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval of this equipment purchased to enhance communications. Approval of the use and maintenance of city-owned property at 1499 Hoyt Street, Planning and Economic Development Department. Summary of request: To approve the use and maintenance of the city-owned property located at 1499 Hoyt Street for a community garden. The property is buildable, and the city would retain the right to sell the property with the community garden members having time to remove the garden prior to any sales. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and maintenance agreement.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. And a fine job, and you'll be leaving us in fine hands during any of your absences with Ms. Grimm. And if people don't know, we are pleased to have on staff our new Deputy Clerk, Kim Grimm. Welcome, and thank you, thank you very much for joining the Muskegon family.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga?
Item C.
Item C.
I was gonna say, item C also.
Same.
Well, there's a few more in the alphabet if anybody wants to...
I didn't hear all that once. I would want a D and G. Have they been mentioned?
Which ones again?
D is in David, and G is in George.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know more about the pen also, so I'm gonna say item D as well.
That was G against him?
B, D, S, N.
Great.
We can start from scratch? No. Vice Mayor?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the accession of items B Baker, C Charlie, D Delta, and G George.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gohren?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes.
Who had item D?
I had item D.
Commissioner German, item D.
All right, I'd like to motion to approve the overnight camping at Pier Marquette for the events on August 14, 15, and 16 of 2015, with an alternate location of Harbor Town Beach Parking Lot.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Johnson to approve the overnight camping at Pier Marquette Park for the Catamaran Racing Association of Michigan event, August 14, 15, and 16, 2015, with an alternate location at Harbor Town Beach Parking Lot. Commissioner German?
Yes, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this, I'd like to know exactly how this event is going, and due to the parking, is there like a fee for like parking or anything like that? And if the alternate location was to be enforced, would there be a fee for parking as well?
I don't believe there's any fee for parking, and unfortunately, I didn't bring the file with me because this is an event we've had for several years, and I'm sorry, I didn't expect any questions. But it is an event we've had for several years, and we've never had any issues with it. They basically come in with their catamarans, and they're out during the day. They usually spend the evening at the restaurant on the beach, so they aren't asking for any additional, you know, liquor or anything like that for the event. Really, the only thing is that they stay, they come with their trailers and that type of thing for the night. And so they've normally stayed in that parking lot right across from the restaurant, but they've asked for the alternative site if the restaurant can't spare that space for them. I don't think it's a huge number. I don't think they take up the whole parking space. But if they aren't able to be there, that's why they are looking at the alternate. So it's, it's an event that, you know, I don't know if Mohammed and the police chief, I don't think we've had any issues with it, or, I don't know, maybe Commissioner Turnquist is seeing it down there when they've been there, but...
It brings people down there. It's a great thing. There's maybe 12 to 16 catamarans, but that brings some excitement down to our focal point of the city.
Yeah, yeah.
These are just the catamaran folks.
Right.
Right. Yeah, you're welcome to go watch it, but it's not like one of those...
Well, I've never been to events, so I was just kinda curious.
Yeah, it's not one of those huge festival type...
Right, and when you say camping, I think about the old traditional like boy scouting and with the tents and...
Yeah, this is just there. I think they just have their trailers and...
And they say a lot of the alcohol there between the two tiers, and it really doesn't disrupt anything, it just brings some more people down.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right? Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gohren?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C. Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga?
I would move to approve the zoning ordinance amendment, amending Section 2313 Community Gardens and replace it with the Urban Farming Ordinance.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga and seconded by Commissioner Johnson to approve the zoning ordinance amendment, to amend Section 2313 Community Gardens and zoning ordinance and replace it with an urban farming ordinance. Did you want to start with any statement?
Sure, yeah. I guess there's some comments that the public would like to make, so we'll accommodate those, but I think this has been an ongoing, it's been a debate that's gone on for a while now, so I know that the Planning Commission has considered it at the end of last year and again this year, so I think that the compromise was a good one, so I think hopefully we'll take the Planning Commission's advice and pass this. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. One of the things that I think, you know, we have to refresh ourselves with on this was that the concern was never about gardening. We've always allowed people to have gardens. That was never even on the table to change that. We expanded our ordinance to specifically allow for community gardens, I believe in 2010. Certainly, I've always supported that. I belong to a neighborhood association that sponsors two of them, and there's a couple more in the neighborhood as well. The concern was is that when we had the request for commercial farming, what effect that might have on neighbors, given some of the complexities under state law regarding who has final say over how things are handled. And as Commissioner Rensselaar Savinga said, I think this is a reasonable compromise. Having followed through on this, I think this addresses the concerns and legitimate concerns that neighbors who bought a home, who live in a densely populated neighborhood, have a right to enjoy their home without anything going on that would have been unexpected when they purchased their property, any more than you'd want your neighbor to open up, you know, a small manufacturing or retail shop across the street from you in what was otherwise a single-family home. And I think this addresses those concerns, so I don't know if maybe the attorney could address maybe how this would work in practice, but I do think this balances very well the neighbors and the folks who want to go into commercial farming. So I'm glad we saw the work on it, we made the changes, so I think this will work better for everybody involved.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnson?
Formosa, I'd like to thank staff and our community gardeners and those involved with the urban agricultural movement here in Muskegon. It's something that we've been working on for quite a, quite a while on this. I've been involved in working with this almost my entire tenure, short tenure as a City Commissioner, and it was a bit dismaying to me coming on to the Commission to find that we couldn't even sell produce grown in the city anywhere, let alone at our new farmer's market. And so I'm happy that with this ordinance, we're making progress there. I'm happy to see that produce that's grown in the city can or will, once, if this Commission approves this ordinance, will be allowed to be sold at our farmer's market. So I'll be excited to be able to purchase McLaughlin grows if they do decide to sell there, or fruits and vegetables from Love Community Gardens if they decide to sell there. So I'm certainly happy about the progress, and I do want to thank staff for sitting down with activists, the urban activists and advocates and community gardeners. We've sat down multiple times over the past year, getting feedback, getting advice, tweaking the ordinance, making some improvements. Is this a perfect ordinance? No, it's not. I'll be first to admit that. I think there's still room for improvement, and this is something that I think we might want to revisit down the road. I'll certainly be advocating to tweak it and further improve it, because I think if we go further in terms of advancing urban ag in our community, go further in advancing the availability of fresh produce, fruits and vegetables, in our community. So I think there's more progress to be done, but this is a situation where we can't allow the pursuit of perfection to be the enemy of the public good. So I'm happy to see this progress being made, and I look forward to further improving it down the road, particularly to enable individuals on homesteads to be able to enjoy the produce they sell on their personal property and also be able to sell that without having to go through the route of a commercial farming license, of paying $500, of going to get a special use permit from the Planning Commission. I think we could streamline that to make that easier on residents to grow and be able to share that as well. But this ordinance does expand our residents' access to fresh produce, and it does allow community gardens to become more self-sufficient financially, something that many of us have been particularly keen on enabling, because this will help community gardens to be able to not be so dependent on grant money that may or may not come from year to year. So this allows them to be a little bit more self-sufficient, and I'm happy about that. And hopefully, this will lead to putting some vacant lots in our city to productive use, not only cultivating community, but cultivating fruits and vegetables. So I'm happy with the progress that's being made, and I suspect we might be revisiting it down the road. I think this is a continuous evolution of advancing urban agriculture in our community and advancing fresh food, fruits and vegetables for our public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one question. If I remember correctly, reading in the ordinance that they have proposed here, was it that private gardens was not able to sell? And what reason? Why is that?
Well, we wanted to go through an approval process, and that's kind of what Commissioner Johnson was just talking about, the special use permit to be able to become commercial. So the real difference between the private garden and the commercial garden was that process, going through the approval process. But otherwise, they're very similar sort of operations. Your private garden on your, in your property becomes commercial when you go through that process and start selling it.
Okay. Thanks. Clarifying it. Joshua? Or ladies first? Anna, do you want to go first?
Joshua Eldon Brady, 1336 Spring Street. As a note, there was one draft actually that did significantly restrict private gardens. That issue was quickly resolved, and I'm thankful for the openness of certain members of city staff, particularly Mr. Franzak, to meet with us and other concerned citizens and take people's input into account on a couple of different issues. And I agree, the ordinance is a very solid move forward. It's moving from a current situation where no one's allowed to sell anything that's grown in a city to a situation where anyone who can find the proper property and overcome the right hurdles can. I'm concerned because I think it's, the one major issue that remains shows that somebody's kind of missing the point. Two years ago, when Anna and I wound up in appeal over the ability to sell with the city, the driving issue wasn't a rule that said no sales. The driving issue was the fact that there were different rules for different entities, that one entity was being celebrated selling, while we were being told that no one was allowed to and not being given a clear answer. I know some of the concerns from Love Community Garden were similar. Another group was being celebrated doing something that they had asked to do and been told no. So the concern wasn't just about sales, it was about different rules for different people or different types of entities. And right now, you have in front of you an ordinance that will allow any type of entity to sell, but under different rules. A nonprofit can grow and sell on any property, whereas a person, an actual human being who wants to grow and sell, is gonna have to find a business or adjacent to their home. A nonprofit pays $200 for approval, a person pays five. A nonprofit just goes through a quick administrative process, an individual has to come to the Planning Commission and ask for permission. So you still have a double standard. You still have different types of entities being applied, having different standards to apply to them. It's easy things to fix. It's a simple, very simple changes in what you have in front of you, and it needs to be changed for a couple reasons. It needs to be changed because zoning is supposed to be about the impact on neighboring properties. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that, and the simple fact is, growing vegetables has the same impact on the neighbor, whether those vegetables will eventually be sold to fund a nonprofit, or whether those vegetables will eventually be sold to help pay the household expenses of an individual who's growing them. Either way, it has the same impact on the neighbors, it looks the same to the neighborhood, and zoning's supposed to be about that, about the use, not about what the identity of the individual or entity that is using the property is. It needs to be fixed, because if we're gonna have a double standard, if we're gonna have one standard for nonprofits and another for individuals, it should go the other way. It should be easier for individuals. It should be easier for individuals, on top of all the constitutional and philosophical reasons of us being natural human persons, because we're the ones who pay property taxes. It's gonna be a double standard, it should be easier for those who are paying taxes, who are paying income taxes. If it's gonna be a double standard, it should be easier for individuals, because when you talk about costs, the 500 versus the 200, nonprofit entities don't go to bed hungry because they're short on money. They don't feel disappointment, they don't feel shortage like people do. And frankly, at the end of the day, if we're treating nonprofit corporate entities different than natural people, people should have the easier side of it, because we're the ones who elect you. That's the way it is. It's a simple change to fix that, to make this that much better. It's a lot easier to do now than to have to come back and do it later.
Thank you, Josh. Anna?
He gets it from memory. I need a notebook. And we have a lot of progress here, and I do just...
Anna, could we just get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anna Eldon Brady, and I live 1336 Spring. So firstly, I am greatly heartened by two changes in this ordinance especially, that I hope will actually be extended beyond just agriculture to improve the quality of life of everywhere in Muskegon. The first one is the extension of quiet hours from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's noted in that that's quiet hours for ag equipment, and I really hope that that is extended beyond that, because I consider this very important, as my tractor is far more quiet than the music, or rather, the bass, that I hear nearing 10:00 p.m. almost every single night in the summer. And it makes it very, very hard to put the children to bed at a reasonable time, and I actually honestly fear they won't get enough sleep once it comes time to get them up for school in the morning, when I'm listening to wumpa, 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 until 10:00 p.m. every night. And I also hope that the emphasis on controlled pesticide application is extended and signals a shift in the city approach for the sake of both environmental and individual health. While I did not walk as much last summer, thanks to being pregnant with Charlie, the summer prior, walking downtown was risking illness, as Hackley Park, the Holiday Inn, the Boulevard on Western from Third to Terrace, and the farmer's market were always chemically treated, and I was gagging on it, to the point where if the direction of the wind kept me unaware as I approached those, that stretch, once I was amidst it, I was getting me unaware as I approached those, that stretch, once I was amidst it, I was getting nauseous. The most pointed time, I had Lucy with me, and I nearly passed out trying to get through that area, because the wind had carried the spray smell away from me, but I was already at the farmer's market by the time I knew it. And I hope this restriction on pesticides that are emphasized here are something you will consider to yourselves, because three of those aforementioned properties are your own, and a healthy Muskegon needs good air and good lungs. More importantly though, I am a little bit disheartened that you've missed one of the marks when it comes to the empowerment and economic benefit of urban ag, by not permitting Joe down the street to earn a little income by growing produce on a vacant lot down from his house. This fictional aggregate character doesn't have a lot, and he knows, like my cheeky button at home I forgot to bring, says that crime doesn't pay and neither does farming. But he knows he might earn enough to pay on that electric bill they just sent final notice on, and that's better than nothing. Joe has the time, he's woefully underemployed, and the kids like the fresh veg and being outside with dad. And for Joe, earning a little money, selling 50 cent tomatoes with his kids as they learn the value of work is worth the long hours in the sun. Joe feels like he's worth something, contributing, a valuable neighbor, and a good dad, and this is empowerment. And that miniscule income, well, it saves him a late fee or two. It buys diapers. It keeps a formerly trash-filled, scraggly lot clear, and actually saves his city thousands in upkeep every year. And Joe pays his taxes, because that lot really isn't worth so much to anybody else, and the zucchini sales can pay them. But under this ordinance, Joe can't do that. Even if he technically could, that $500 gatekeeper fee for planning review would keep him, us, out. And that isn't good food justice by a long mile. But if there's anything I've learned in this whole ordeal, and for me, it's gone on more than just a year or two, it's gone on almost three, it's that Terry Pratchett, one of my favorite authors, is right. There is no justice. Just us. Just us. We, people. And so here we are, right now, asking you to consider all of us, not just those who can afford it, or who are grant-funded, or who have connections. Please don't sacrifice people for a personal aesthetic. Work from and beyond this ordinance, because it is important that we pass it, even if it is imperfect. But we are not finished, and nor can we be, until all of us can grow. Because while all of us can grow, produce for personal consumption, not all of us can grow as people under this. And if you think that's unimportant, or someone can just go elsewhere, then that's really missing the point. And so please, think on that.
Anything else, commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Just one caveat. For anybody, whether it's a personal garden or a community garden, or a commercial farm, just be real aware that we're an old industrial town, and make sure you get your soil tested for your safety and the safety of anybody who may be consuming your produce. It's just a good practice, and that's not required in this ordinance. But even though it's not required, it is something I would suggest anybody do, whether you're growing a pot of tomatoes in your backyard, unless you brought in fresh soil, just to be on the safe side. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Just a question. Three of you sit on the planning commission, and Mr. Heldon Brady raised the question which kind of stirs my mind a little bit, about the fees between nonprofit and regular people who are doing that, and their ability to sell and not sell. I'm sure you must have discussed that, it's been going on for a long time. Could you share your feelings on that?
Yeah, that's my question. Yeah, sure. So the difference in cost really is the requirement of going through the special use permit process that has a cost involved in it, and that's where the $500 comes in. I think the initial thinking was, when we were developing the ordinance and talking about how we would bring something forward that would be passable, right, that everybody would be comfortable with, was the idea that we wanted to be able to allow people who had gardens at their homes to be able to sell it if they wanted to, because there was a process they could go through, which happened to be the special use process. But at the same time, the community gardens, we didn't expect those to be an accessory use at somebody's home. We expected, for the most part, they're going to be on a separate parcel, or on a vacant lot, or someplace else. So that's why the distinction between the two. We were trying to allow for people who wanted to sell out of their private gardens to have an ability to do that, and that was a garden that was on their property with their house. But at the same time, we wanted to be able to have some opportunity for commercial activity at the community gardens, which typically, I think, and in every case, were not on a property with a home on it. They were on their own properties. So like, Love Community Garden isn't an accessory use, it's the use of that property, that's the principal use on that property. And I guess really to an extent, that kind of is the case at McLaughlin Grows, it's an accessory use, in that particular case, to the hospital's property. So we were trying to make sure we accommodated the two types of uses that were out there, because that was part of the point, we were trying to make it so that the community gardens and the people who were growing at their homes could sell, with the understanding that just like Commissioner Johnson said, we might not be able to bring the perfect ordinance forward today and get approval from everybody, but we could bring something forward that allows us to accomplish that, right? Get the people selling that, that want to be able to sell, see how it works, and then see how we might need to tweak it six months from now or for the next growing season. So that's why there ended up being two different, I guess, I don't want to say standards, but two different places where the different types of-
And one is considered a private business. Okay, so there's a continuity of-
I understand the private business, but we also hear that some of them are doing it not really as a private business, but to supplement the income that they need to go on.
It's still a private business.
Nonprofit can sell at their locations. Other people, I think the zoning thing says they have to be zoned in a retail area to sell.
Essentially, it said no onsite sales, right, for everybody, unless they're in an area that allows for those types of sales. So if you're growing on a property that has a restaurant on it, you could sell at the restaurant. If you're growing on a property that has maybe the ability to sell at a grocery store, you can sell in that medium there. But if you're growing at your house, there isn't an opportunity right now to be able to put up a farm stand or sell things from your home. The goal is to have them go to the farmer's market and sell them, or go to a private retail place and sell the things that they're growing.
Nonprofit has the same restrictions as a private individual, and as where they can sell? They have the same.
Yes.
And I think there's a distinction. The ordinance talks about community gardens or urban commercial farms. It doesn't talk about, as far as I can read it, it talks about, it doesn't talk about nonprofit or for-profit as being exclusive to those two ways you can sell produce. Either group, either nonprofit or for-profit could, I mean, and I don't know how, it said it's not intended for for-profit commercial gardens, community gardens. But it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with your tax status about how you can organize to grow food. So it more has to do with how you choose to set up your, the way you're going to set food. Is it going to be a community garden, which is meant to be more educational and provide a communal environment for children, and not really, it doesn't have to be a for-profit commercial operation? Or is it going to be a urban commercial farm, which is more intended for for-profits, but it could be an individual, or a group, or a nonprofit that could run an urban commercial farm? It has nothing to do with the way the entity is organized, as I read the ordinance.
That's my understanding as well.
And, excuse me, the nonprofits are actually paying less fees than the actual resident?
No.
It's not nonprofits, it's the way you choose to apply for your community permit. If you decide to go as a community garden, you pay one fee and get, have to go through a certain process to get a site plan review. If you choose to go as an urban commercial farm, you go through a different process. So it doesn't have anything to do with whether you're an individual, whether you're a for-profit or a nonprofit, or it just has to do with what you desire as the way to pursue your, you know, your way of doing that.
So people could organize a community garden, similarly to what the other two community gardens, or other multiple community gardens are doing in our community, and accomplish the same sort of-
A business could support, or could sponsor a community garden, as I understand it.
Commissioner Johnson?
And they would submit that to the city planning department. If it's a $200 fee, the planning department would review it and approve the site plan for the community garden, whereas an urban commercial farm would have to get a special permit from the planning commission, pay the $500 fee to pursue that route, and the planning commission would either approve or deny.
Right.
I would likely want to revisit that. I don't think that's something that we can tweak right this moment and improve on this dies, but I think that that's something that I would prefer the city planning department review those site plans and approve them, rather than go through the planning commission route. That's my personal preference. I don't think we're in a position to tweak or change that now, but I think we could change the fees. Even though there's no fees in the ordinance itself, we could, correct me if I'm wrong, legal counsel, we could establish a new fee for urban commercial farms that's specific to them. You know, if we wanted to go $200, $250 route, we could do that and just add a new, carve out a new fee for urban commercial farms.
Vice Mayor?
No, I mean, Commissioner Rinsimba Sibenga has explained it, I thought, fairly well. To get a special use permit, there's a fee in the fee schedule.
Yeah, I know.
Well, this doesn't set any fees. It just says you need a special use permit. So we can decide you don't need a special use permit. But saying that some special use permits have one kind of fee, and other special use permits have a different kind of fee, creates a whole different set of inequities. And so what this says is that one type of operation, it's got, as he said, it's got nothing to do with your tax status. If you have one type of operation, it goes for city staff for planning department review. If it is a urban commercial farm, it requires a higher level of review, and that does require what is currently the standard fee for a special use permit. You know, those fees exist for everybody who's asking for either a site plan review or a special use permit, as it stands now. So I really think that we need to move forward on this. We can discuss it going forward, but we're in April, and we're at the end of April, and if we put this off, then what that means is, the existing ordinance, which does not allow any sales for anybody, will continue well into the beginning of the growing season, and I don't think that's fair to people. We made a commitment that we would come up with a compromise. This got through with a substantial majority, I believe it was six to one, on the planning commission, after substantial discussion, not just with our own attorneys and city staff, but also with their consultation with MDAR, which is the Michigan Department of Agriculture, and with the resources available at the College of Agriculture at Michigan State University. And based on those consultations and that work done, I think we've come up with a compromise that does the best it can for all the competing interests involved. And I think at this point, we need to say, this is as good as we're going to get at this point. Let's move forward, let people put their plants in the ground over the next few weeks as they need to, and if we decide, as we have with other things, that after seeing how this works out, we need to make changes to it, we certainly can do that. But let's get the thing started so people can start planting. I think we've reached that point, and so let's move this forward, and let's people start their gardens and start their commercial farms if that's what they choose to do, and let's see how it works. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else, gentlemen? That roll call, please.
Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsimba Sibenga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let's plant some tomatoes.
Here, here.
Okay, who is item D?
E?
That was missing.
E.
E or D?
D.
E, as in Edward.
I thought you said D.
Oh, dog, no.
He's not even on, he's not even on.
Maybe E. This was the Getty Street Evanston to Apple Avenue Engineering?
I have D.
Was it supposed to be E? Yeah. All of them were E. Right.
D is an Edward?
E is an Edward.
Well, then-
Let's approve D.
Yeah. Well, then there was a misstatement, so we can have discussion on E. Let's get D out of the way, since apparently that was the wrong one, and we want to make sure we have a vote for that. So I would move that we award the contract to McCormick Sand, Inc., for the bids for Getty Street Evanston to Apple Avenue.
Second. It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to award the contract to McCormick Sand for the 1697 Getty Street Evanston to Apple Avenue project. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsimba Sibenga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E as in Edgar Allan Poe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My pleasure, Commissioner.
I would move that we authorize staff to hire Johnson and Anderson for professional engineering services.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by the vice mayor, to authorize staff to hire Johnson and Anderson for professional engineering services. Commissioner?
Well, it doesn't seem like much, but, you know, I keep seeing these things that we're spending money here and there and everything, and I just want to ask, for whose benefit, all this information about who's buried where, and this and that, is it for us, is it for the community? It's a service that we currently do not have?
That's correct. We do not have that service right now.
And what will it provide us?
Going, moving into the 20th century, if you will. We're so behind the stone ages as far as technology is concerned. All of our documents are on books right now, so if you're coming in, or somebody's coming in, to look up any records for their buried family member or loved ones, we have to go through stacks and cards, if you will, like the old library system, to find out where they're at. And if we have to locate a new plot, or a new lot to be buried, we have to go through, you know, what's available and some, we haven't made the mistake, but there is a potential for making those mistakes, that somebody's buried, but yet the headstone is not there, and you're not seeing it, so you assume it's a vacant lot, or available lot, if you will, and you end up digging in there, and we don't want to get into that mistake. And then also, it would allow the customers, if you will, in this case, to access the information themselves, so they can, you know, push the button and find out where they want to have their loved ones buried, if you will, and they can choose from that as well.
Are we inundated with requests now that backs us up? Takes too many hours?
We are, the paperwork that we have right now in the books, and at some point, we're going to have to get into preserving those books. And preserving them by constantly opening them is not going to be there forever, ever. At some point, we're going to have to scan those files. We're going to have to map them, just like everything else. But you always ask me tough questions. What do you hate?
Anything else, commissioners? Roll call, please.
We've already approved.
Oh, we already approved it?
Yes. Well, we did vote on it.
We did move it.
Okay.
Well, I got confused.
There is a G, right?
Somebody took off?
Yeah, that, that was me also.
Okay. I get me so confused.
I'd make a recommendation that we approve the permit and sign the documents for the Turnkey Network Solutions.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the permit and sign the documents for Metro Act, the Turnkey Network Services Metro Act amendment. Commissioner?
See, I always like to pick on Mohammed. I see engineering in this department, and I know he's along, what, there's a lot of reading on that. What's that going to do for us? And do we have that service currently, or are we just renewing something?
No, this is a new company. If you recall, few, few, few years ago, the state adopted what they call Telecommunication Act, that allowed those telecommunication companies to apply to the state, and we decided to participate back in the days, I want to say 2009 or '08, somewhere back then, which allowed the state to collect the fees and then send the participating communities a portion of the money that they collect, if you will. Right now, we receive, and I think today was the day, I think $140,000 or $130,000 that we receive annually from the state for those telecommunication permits, if you will. And we are obligated, unless we have some issues with the right-of-way usage, that we need to approve those permits, if you will, since those companies are participating with the state. So we have, unless we have an issue with the right-of-way that they're proposing to use, we have to approve them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzimus Sabinka?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gowron, sorry. Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That takes us to public hearings.
Public hearing for 2015-2016 Action Plan, Community and Neighborhood Services, summary of request, to conduct a public hearing of the 2015-2016 Action Plan for public comments. Staff recommendation, to receive comments about the proposed 2015-2016 Action Plan at the public commission meeting.
You need to invite for comments. I need it, you're here, right? Give us a thumbnail sketch of the 2015-2016 Action Plan.
Anything? Well, it's pretty much the same as last year or this current year. We instituted two new programs. One of the, one of the programs was for our blight elimination, and the other is neighborhood grants. But we did three, and a third was to assist buyers who purchase homes in the city of Muskegon, we give them up to $5,000 for closing costs, and that is going very well. We have about four on Lisa's desk tonight, that will be closing in the next two weeks. We closed one today, and our division house closed today, that's just a side note, so we did complete the sale on that house. But our CDBG and home programs are pretty much consistent with trying to assist our citizens, and housing is really our focus, affordable, decent homes, and making sure that our citizenry have decent homes to live in. And so if they are low income or have challenges in their household income, we can assist any of our homeowners in the city of Muskegon, and we also manage Norton Shores to assist their citizens with those necessary home repairs. So we do housing, and I think our programs are pretty, pretty much listed there in the budget that's included in the action plan, and the numbers haven't really changed much. We do assist with streets as much as we can, and this year, we're able to provide the engineering department, which is kind of popular tonight, with a little bit of money to do one block. And so we're happy to, you know, just help out the city of Muskegon, our other departments. We help with code enforcement, we assist with ramps, we give money to Love, Inc., to help with utility assistance for citizens who are challenged that way or with their rent. Trying to think of some of the other highlights. That's enough, Mohammed, so I have to listen to my colleague and...
Now, you'll be receiving comments until the end of the day on the 30th.
Correct.
Right?
Till midnight, and you can go online, you can, the help desk IT department has provided a way for you to just shoot us an email if you have any comments about the action plan. It is online, it is at the library, it is also at Muskegon Housing Commission for any of the residents there.
And then you will be submitting to the Department of Housing and Urban Development May 1st or thereabouts.
Pretty much around the 1st.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Bailey? Thank you. Are there any? No?
No, I was just wondering if Ms. Bailey might delve into, because we're, I sit on the Citizens District Council with her, that oversees the CDBG money, and the community decided to do something a little differently with the CHODO money, the Community Housing Development Organization money, and how that's going to be distributed. And if you could just touch on that, because I thought that was an interesting approach and something that wouldn't necessarily tie up the money, it can be used as needed when projects came to the forefront, so if you could just touch on that briefly, I appreciate.
Sure. In the past, we've allowed community housing development organizations that we call CHODOs to apply for funds every year annually, and we usually put out an application in the paper, I'd say, April, first part of April, and they're allowed to present what projects they'd like to do for the year, and then we go through the process and allocate funds. Well, this year, we are going to release the timeline, so to speak, and allow them to apply any time during the fiscal year, because a lot of the agencies are having difficulty with the snow that we had. I know you don't remember any of that, but it was a long winter, and it started quite early, which meant that took away from them starting some of their projects. So they're a little bit behind, and typically, we like to have our projects completed by the end of June. So in this way, we can allow them to apply when their last project completes. That way, they don't have two open projects, and we're just constantly trying to catch up and monitor two projects from two different years. So the money will be available for them for the year, pretty much, to apply for. So when their project completes for 2014, then they can apply for a 2015 project, and the money is there, and it'll be the same type of process, meaning that it will come to the Citizens District Council for approval, and then come as one of those agreements that the commission would sign.
It's a little bit of flexibility, given the climate.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Release the pressure.
Yeah, the flexibility is nice, because as Ms. Bailey indicated, the agencies that come before for the CHODOs had gotten backed up, and rather than commit those funds for the upcoming fiscal year to them, when they're still working on wrapping up their previous project, the CDC decided to keep the money essentially in a kitty, you know, bank it there for now, so once they're available, once those projects are done, they can come and apply for it. Or an agency that doesn't have a project, a new agency could come in and say, we want to be, we're going to serve as a, as a community housing development organization, and we would like to apply for this money. So it, it does provide that built-in flexibility, and the citizen district, the members of the Citizen District Council thought that was important, and so I think your department's doing good work, and I think we have some good folks on the Citizen District Council as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you for saying that in front of our city manager, I appreciate it.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address this issue? If not, vice mayor.
Seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. It has been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by the, by Commissioner German, to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinzimus Sabinka?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, please.
New bus- 2015-2016 Healthcare and Wellness Program, Finance Department, summary of request, it's time to renew the city's healthcare coverage for the 2015-2016 plan year from June 1, 2015 to May 31, 2016. Renewal premiums for the city's current healthcare program came in at 9.95% increase over the current year. Last year, we experienced a decrease of 2.62% due to changing to an 80/20 coinsurance plan and increasing the deductible from $1,000 and $2,000 to $2,000 and $4,000. In 2013 and 14, the increase was 5.04% over the prior year. In comparative terms, many employees have been experiencing sharp double-digit increases for several years. Also, the city's healthcare costs remain below the hard cap limit set by Public Act 152 and remain cost competitive with the standards set by the state for new hires. These are good independent indicators that the city's program is cost-effective. For 2015-2016, the city will continue to pay the HRA deductible if the employee and spouse completed the four-step wellness initiative by March 31st. Non-participants in the wellness program will continue to pay the first $500 for a single person and $1,000 for a double or family plan of the deductible. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to execute documents with Priority Health to renew employees' healthcare coverage for the coming year.
Vice mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we authorize staff to execute the documents with Priority Health to renew employee healthcare coverage for the coming year.
Second. It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinzimus Sabinka, to authorize staff to execute documents with Priority Health to renew employee healthcare coverage for the coming year. Good evening, Derek.
Good evening. As you have before you the proposed renewal for the healthcare insurance coverage for the city employees for the coming year, no changes are noted to be proposed for the current plan year. We made some significant changes, as you may recall, from last year, and we're still monitoring the impact, if you will, of those changes. So far, it's been relatively positive. Unfortunately, we are experiencing just under a 10% increase in the renewal rate this year, due largely to some experience factors, if you will, last year. With that said, I don't know if you have any specific questions?
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Turnquist?
Just one, the 10% participation rate where the employees are paying 10 of the, of the total, is that pretty comparable to other municipalities?
There are some, well, there are some that are right about that rate, there are some that are not quite to that rate yet, and then there are some that are a little more than that, which is something, again, that could be subject to negotiation with a lot of the labor agreements that we currently have.
So you feel we're, we're at where we should be?
We're, we're in the ballpark.
Good.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzimus Sabinka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Any other business, commissioners? Mr. German?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is appropriate time. I'd just like to bring to commission's attention, yesterday evening was the first meeting for the EOC committee that we had. Commissioner Hood and I sit on that committee, and it was very productive. I think that this is something that the community will find very resourceful, and which the department, one of the department heads, DeWanna Thompson, is the, I guess, the director of affirmative action that handles that, and also Mr. Tim Brysy, I believe, with the county, was there also. But the citizens that sit on that council, I mean, in the committee, are very engaged and excited about what we have and how this is going to serve the community as a whole, not just internally here at the city of Muskegon, but a larger scope, you know, within the city. Also, we're also in need for one more committee member, and Commissioner Dan, we're aware of that, we're still working on that, but if you're interested in sitting on that committee, you must live in Ward Two, which consists of the Angel, Neighborhood, McLaughlin, Jackson Hill, and Nelson. So, and just one other thing, so with that being said, I, I think the commission made a good move to reactivate this EOC committee, which I think is going to be very resourceful for the community. And just like to shed a little light, we talk about employment and jobs, and I was able to visit today the Thurgood Marshall Job Fair at the Burrell Multiplex Center in the Muskegon Heights area, and got a chance to speak with a couple agencies and employees that, that was out there, and one that I would like to say is the Department of Corrections that are actually looking for people at entry-level jobs, basically 15 credit hours, and these jobs are actually starting out at about $16 and top out at about 45, I mean, $25. And also Port City DICAS, in which, you know, we definitely have a lot of communication and engagement with here at the city, are actually taking applications right now and interviews right on the spot. So I just kind of wanted to share that with the community, let them know that there is jobs out there, so keep your eyes open.
Very good. Thank you both, Commissioner German and Commissioner Hood, for your service.
Since we're mentioning the job fair, and jobs that are available, Alcora is still hiring also. They said they, I think they hired over 280 people last year, and they're still hiring.
We can certainly use some good people at the DOC, because we're losing 70 COs a month to retirement, so 3,000 a year for the next three years. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, Commissioner Hood?
I move to a German.
Second.
Commissioner Hood was first, and everybody else seconded, all in favor? You're all dismissed.